I'd like to call to order the September 12th, 2019 Springboro Board of Education meeting.
Stewie?
Yeah, here.
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 Ladies and gentlemen, to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1.2, adoption of the agenda.
Second.
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes. Okay, item 1.3, approval of the August 22nd, 2019 meeting minutes. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Uh, yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Yes.
Item 1.4, approval of the September 12th, 2019 Springboro Board of Education meeting minutes. Motion to approve.
Second.
Stewie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes. And find, I'm sorry, that should have been August 30th meeting minutes. Um, and then approval of the September 8th, 2019 special meeting minutes. Need motion to approve.
Seven.
Yeah.
Stewie?
Uh, yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Yes.
On to our public participation and introduction of guests, item 2.1.
All right, for my very first board meeting, I am honored to welcome the Jonathan Wright chapter of the National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution. And on September 17th, 232 years ago, we signed our constitution. And these ladies are going to present us with a donation and kind of explain why this is important.
Sure.
Okay, girl. So, um, I guess I'm gonna read my spiel and then it explains why I'm here and how I helped y'all came with these constitutions. Um, so my name is Cheryl Cavendish, I'm the Constitution chairperson for the Jonathan Wright chapter, National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution. And I have with me tonight, um, our, uh, Angela Fledor for who's our registrar and Karen DeRosa who's our media publicity chairperson. Um, the DAR headquartered in Washington DC is a nonprofit, non-political volunteer women's service organization dedicated to promoting patriotism, restoring American history and securing America's future through education. Any woman 18 years or older regardless of race, religion, or ethnic background who can prove lineal descent from patriots of the American Revolution is eligible to join. DAR members volunteer millions of service hours annually in a variety of ways, whether it be restoring Revolutionary War veteran headstones, preserving genealogical records, restoring and maintaining historic sites, promoting education and citizenship through youth programs, and of course serving and assisting our veterans. The Jonathan Wright DAR chapter here in Springboro is a small chapter with a big heart. We keep busy volunteering at the Christian Washington Home Center in Camp Davis and Camp Davis in Ohio, participating in local nationalization ceremonies, sponsoring essay contests and scholarship opportunities, making donations to disaster victims and veterans in need, writing thank you cards to veterans taking their own flight and promoting patriotism in the study of American history through activities like Constitution Week. A special note, um, there are essay contests or and scholarship opportunities ongoing here and DeRosa is in charge of those, um, the scholarship, the scholarship draft in February and the essay this fall. So, how do they find out about the, your, they know?
Uh, we'll be posting them over the next two weeks.
Okay. There are opportunities with love participation. Okay, our Constitution Week activities include a play at the Springboro Library during Constitution Week is, which is September 17th to the 23rd, uh, the mayor's official proclamation of Constitution Week in Springboro done this year on September 5th at the council meeting. We donated a book by Jean Prince to every fifth grader teacher and included curriculum ideas and activity sheets. Each fifth grader will also receive a Constitution Week kid that includes an American flag, pencils, lip bar, candy, and bells to ring on Constitution Day. I am hoping to report to our state and national headquarters that close to 500 bells were run in Springboro in celebration of the freedom of Americans experience under the Constitution. It makes me cry. They were delivered this week to both elementary schools. Um, finally, at the invitation of Stephanie Jordan, we are giving a Constitution talk to the seventh and eighth graders on September 19th. And now, when I asked Mrs. Dogger if there was anything we could do to promote Constitution Week in the high school, she asked if we could provide her government students with pocket constitutions. So this year, we are delighted to present her with 350 pocket constitutions with the hope that this resource will encourage her students to read and understand the Constitution as means becoming educated and informed citizens. Right here.
Are you going out with your keys away?
Yeah.
Okay. There you go, girlfriend.
Wow.
They're kinda heavy.
Oh, sure. Sure. This is very cute.
I'm gonna offer constitutions to anybody who wants some.
Uh, I am just for tennis. Yeah, but you look good.
Um, I would like some bells. We can, I just, I, I have to, I do actually have a few more, but the idea is to, um, ring the, the ringing the bells, the freedom bells. And so I, I'm hoping I'll work on that.
Okay.
I have, I have constitutions for anybody who wants one.
Thank you, it's a power.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need one?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
I just left you.
Back in the back.
Pocket Constitution. Hi there. She's a teacher. I think I'll need one. Do you want one? I'll get lots of light. You need one?
Okay, so I thought that it was okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and do it. I would like to take just a minute to introduce a couple of guests that we have today. If you've watched what we're doing here in the schools at all, you've seen that Springboro has come alongside Trotwood knowing that they were really hit hard with the tornadoes. And we had Trotwood's, um, school board president reach out and say, would you mind if we came to a school board meeting and just kind of, we wanted to come into Springboro and have a chance to meet some of the people that have done some of the work here. And so, I did have, I did have a chance to introduce everybody because they put the gavel down, but I did introduce some of the, of the administrators. Um, sitting next to you is Steve Russell who was part of this, one of the churches that gave an amazing donation to the uniforms, um, in your school district. So, if you guys could just stand up really quick and introduce yourself, I would greatly appreciate it.
Hello, everybody. We are so excited to be here, first and foremost. I'm Denise Moore, president of the Trotwood Madison City School Board.
And I'm Vanessa Judith Freeman, I'm the vice president of Trotwood School Board.
And I'm a member.
And they just, I can't begin to tell you how impressed, I reached out to the previous superintendent in June and to see the way that this school district has come alongside and supported their families during such a time of crisis and just figuring out what their families needed and the kids that were displaced and what they're gonna do to meet the needs of those children. You have, until you actually talked to some of these people, I've met with Ella and I don't remember the other girls.
Tasha.
Tasha, yep, yep, Tasha. I had lunch with them and just to hear their hearts and, I mean, they will figure this out, whatever the barriers are that this tornado, that what happened, they're gonna figure out a way to get past it. So that is just, thank you for coming and I just am so impressed with your community and thank you for letting us come alongside you and, um, walk this journey with you. So, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right, here we go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think I have one.
Oh, sure.
Oh, just, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think I have some. Do we sign off?
Yeah.
I think it's a regular. I can stand there.
She don't like the big table. Thank you.
Oh, yes.
We're, yeah.
We're, we're charged with that, aren't we? Item 2.2, Springboro Education Association Report. Okay, 2.3, Springboro Classified Employees Association Report. 2.4, I don't believe there's any current participation. Item 2.5, Public Participation. On agenda. Okay. Moving on to section three, the work session.
Hello, everybody. So, you should have in front of you, um, the new doors at Clear Creek Elementary. So if you're looking at Clear Creek Elementary, um, the, the doors on the north side and the south side need to be replaced. A lot of salt has been getting underneath them, corroded the metal, um, you know, from the safety aspect, I definitely want to get those changed. For your consideration, our three quotes, um, the doors are going to be, they're called storefront doors, so the window, and when you go into Clear Creek, uh, there's a whole vestibule there. So, we wanted to make sure that there was enough light penetrated inside the building. So, we went with storefront windows, the quote, which they're bigger windows. On those windows, there's a, uh, white or a clear security film on them. So it's really our first kind of step into the security film, um, arena. This would be on both sides, the north and the south side doors. And like I said, there's three doors on the left, um, well, as you're looking to the building, and then two doors on the right. The one quote is 24,500, the next quote is 28,005, and the third is $30,000. Any questions on that?
So these are the external doors?
Exter.
Or are these the ones, I guess we're not doing any more than once in the, I don't know.
Well, no, I mean, I, to be honest with you, there are a couple of doors inside that I'm gonna be working on, but they are more towards the garden, the, um, the little area inside, yeah. Century garden, thank you very much. Learned, I'm learned. So, um, yeah, but these are the, uh, these are really nice, uh, security doors.
So are they all the same quality? It's just different pricing?
Just different pricing. Yes.
Interesting.
Which brings me to the next one. So, we, we had new doors put on the, um, the board office. We had six doors put on there. And, um, this, this is for phase two, what you see in front of you, for 32,860. There was already a phase one for, uh, just over $18,000. So, um, these doors are the same quality of doors, it's a different design, uh, different design of doors. It's not a storefront door, um, it's like those kind of doors right there, but they're metal, so there's no protective.
So what's, what's the useful life of these doors? How many years can we expect?
Yeah, so, um, your, your useful life is about 25 to 30 years worth, these doors. And it depends on, it depends on how much salt we can clear away from them.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any questions? All right, so moving on to the proposal of the part-time custodian. In front of you, you're gonna see, uh, the 2019, 18, 19 costs. Please understand that these are the numbers that I could derive from the system. There's a lot of, a lot of fluidity, if you will, in the numbers where they're being posted to. So I tried to, where I worked with the Treasury Department, and I, I tried to, to get as best numbers as I possibly could. So what you see there, the maintenance cost, the building checks that we do, the evening athletic events, the custodial overtime for the buildings that we have in grounds. So roughly on a, a good estimate is about $68,000 worth of overtime that we had. So, if you were to bring on an additional part-time custodian, for 260 days, paying them 15, 49, which is 25 cents a difference per second shift, it's about $16,000. In the end, and you can see my notes down there, the, the net projected savings is around $27,000. Now, keep in mind that that does not include comp time, so this is just straight overtime that I can capture. We have comp time that we also do too, and I couldn't, I, I really can't tell you right off the bat how much we pay in comp time, because it's not calculated via an overtime calculation.
What's the difference between overtime and comp time?
Yeah, so, uh, if you take it as overtime, you get paid time and a half. If you take it as comp time, then you take that time in a later.
Gotcha, thank you.
So, $27,000, we, we will realize that, I think that's a very, very conservative investment. I'm tracking that a lot better now and will have better numbers by the end of this week.
So are you thinking if we hire this part-time custodian, then this person would be able to take care of the majority of these overtime, um, hours?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We see, we, we see a lot of overtime in the, in the evenings for athletic events. And this person, we would come up with a schedule, their schedule will be fluid, um, and we may, they may have a Wednesday or Thursday off, they may have a Monday or Tuesday, and then they're gonna work the weekend. So, I need that special kind of person to be able to shift that kind of schedule. So that's one stipulation of this job. There may be some Saturday work, could be some Sunday work, it just depends on what we have more.
There's not a lot of overlap within this, that there be the same overtime at the junior high and high school that we wouldn't be able to?
Yeah, so.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, so you may have a volleyball event in the, in the junior high, you may have something here. So, that person will have the ability to go back and forth, but maybe we need more of a presence here. So you will have to have some overtime in some areas that may overlap, but in the end...
There's still gonna be a savings.
In the end, we're still gonna see a savings, absolutely.
Yeah. All overtime, it's just, it's gonna put a big dent.
And we went with a part-time person, we definitely can keep them busy, uh, part-time. There was a long time ago, and I don't know how many years ago, there was a proposed full-time position for this. I think there was an active position at one time, um, what's that?
Uploader?
Yeah. Yeah, so, um, but, but we think we can do with a part-time person.
So would you, I presume the, the prefer will be the five hours versus the four?
Four, five, you know, no more than 25.
Okay. I would say be flexible.
I appreciate you looking into this, that's significant.
Sure, sure, thanks. Okay, there's no questions to that. Now this is, um, this is an interesting one, so I, I manage the cellphones here in this district. Surprise. So, uh, what I did is I put together an analysis on the bills that we had. The equipment, before I got here, um, was basically what kind of equipment you want, we'll go ahead and first, where Verizon has a plan where you get a, a seven for free if you do a year contract with them. So, going forward, that's what we're gonna get. So, the equipment charges that you see are, are going to be reduced. Now that doesn't mean that if I get a cellphone, or Kyle does, and is, you know, fast-moving as he is, and he throws it and it breaks, we're gonna have to get him a new cellphone. So that could be, you know, 100, 200 dollars. So, that number, it's not, this isn't replacement, this is actual purchase. There could be some replacement in here, but these are actual purchases. 35, 34, 35 participants is what we typically have. And our average monthly cost per line for the last 12 months is $53.89. If we were to go to a $50 stipend, which would in turn make me not have to manage this, would give the phone and the, the accounts to the individual users, um, it would save us about $1,600. And that is not including any costs that would occur for any broken devices or any... If you went to a 40...
Kyle would have to buy his own phone in that situation if something were to happen?
Yeah, so if you look down at the bottom, I, what it is, I reached out to 18 different districts. Seven of the districts provide cellphones to their users. Seven provide stipends, and then four of them provide a stipend and/or a device. So, some of them give and allowance each year for a phone, you know, $50 allowance or something like that. Where I came from, we did a straight $50 stipend and that was it. Because you're using the device obviously for work, but you're also using it for personal use as well. 50, I didn't see anything lower than $50. You know, if you went to 45, you're gonna save 36, maybe 700 dollars. So, um, it's just really information for you to make a decision. It's a recommendation. Again, I can keep on managing, we could actually go, and, and these also fluctuate these prices because it depends on how much usage we have. Our plans, you have 400 minutes per, per plan and then you share. So, if I use over 400 minutes, I'm taking it from somebody else, and if they don't have it to give, then we're gonna be charged extra money on top of that. So, I couldn't tell you, we have a flat $1,700 bill every, or every month, I, I can't do that because it's, it's variable.
So do you spend a lot of your time in the administration of this? And is it, you have some sense of how cumbersome it is to oversee this?
Yeah, I, I have, I have the last month since I've been here. It's easier now, to be honest with you, and we could switch to an all-plan, unlimited plan, which is like 54 bucks. So, you know, we, we would spend an extra $1,700 a year and we wouldn't see flat fees. We would see a flat baseline or, or monthly bill.
How does that mark you?
So it's unlimited data, unlimited call.
Oh.
So, basically, it's, it's a set price and there's no variability.
Yeah, I was just trying to get a sense, like if a $50 stipend is a discount savings, but it's in transit $1,600, I'm just trying to get a sense of, it's not that large a number, administratively, how big of a burden it is on you though to do it versus just doing...
I will, I will say, Jimmy, it's easier now because I kinda got the beat on it.
Okay.
Yeah, so, it, it's not, it's not a deal topic to me, it's just, it would be easier to let individuals manage it. I, I've tried to reach out to some of the administrators, people who have funds, I've gotten some positive feedback on it, got some, you know, they don't wanna keep two phones at the same time.
I hate that you know, before you was serious, like, like at least unless it was a little bit worse before him and before Jim. Everyone was called me. I mean, it's not terrible, but yeah, it's just, it's kind of, there's more people at any given time.
Yeah. We can take it off and play.
Save this one somewhere else. All right, any questions on that? Thank you, bye.
Yeah, that's right. Um, we're gonna do item 4.1 first, because athletics. Approval of a donation of $100 from a matport to athletic department.
Motion?
Second.
All right, um, Anderson?
Yes.
That?
Yes.
Stewie? Then I will do the rest, item 4.2, 4.7. 4.2 is approval of the Yoda Bertles Club. Item 4.3 is approval of the PPA Club. Item 4.4 is donation of a walker from the Cheneau, Cheneau family.
Cheneau.
Valued at $100 to be used at Clear Creek Elementary. 4.5, approval of a $50 cardigan card from Trotwood 2000. Item 4.6, approval of a donation for the use of a dunk K valued at $240 from AMS Rentals sponsored by Gail and Graham, the owner of the K, to be used for Trotwood 2000 fundraiser. And then item 4.7, approval of a pocket constitution valued at $350 from the Jonathan Wright chapter of National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution to use at the American Government Conference.
Okay, approval to, um, items 4.2 through 4.7. Seven.
Second.
Discussion.
Okay, now, Stewie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
That?
Yes.
Stewie?
Yes.
Item 1.1 is the review of policy 2413, which is the career advising policy that Brad and, um, Bert with Miss Cook, we do follow this policy. There are no changes, we just are required to review it every two years. Um, 5.2 is the technical change for compliance officer policies. Best practices for available emails to be attached to each, um, policy, so we put Andrea Cook and Chuck Liggins on the student side, and we have put myself and Rob on the employee side for all of those anti-arrestment, the discrimination policies to investigate if there is an issue. 5.3 is the approval of Tom Isaacs as our, as the board says, a key for suspension, expulsion, and appeal hearings. So if, if after, at the district level, the family wants to appeal, they may to, uh, the ESD, entered by Mr. Isaac. So, 5.4, my old, back to my old forms, um, is the September personnel report. Lots of supplementals, um, these are all academic supplementals for the school year that need to be approved. 5.5 is the extra time, extended day report that we did some research on. These are things such as ESY that we provide in the summer, meal trips, bus driver physicals, um, summer cleaning, and, um, this was recommended by the auditor a few years ago in order to catalog this. Um, it's already been approved, which is fine, they've already paid for it. The auditor just needs this type of report. A day does not equal a true eight-hour day, it could just be two hours for a bus driver physical, but it's, catalog this a day. Yes, these are all in the agreement for the classified employees that they get the extra pay for. 5.6 would be the approval of the, or the, the part-time custodian that Rob explained to you all. 5.7 is the approval of the lead driver to the 230-day contract we talked about, I think on August 22nd, for Kenny Shasha. 5.8 is, um, it's signed for Cam Turner, it's the volunteer list, um, that needs to be approved. And that's all of those. And that's all of those.
Five point nine, approval of items five point three through five point eight. Have a motion.
I've got two questions. I'm sorry, second, second. My first question, it just reminded me with a compliance officer, is there something that says we are supposed to update our website with the number of complaints or concerns a certain, like, twice a year or something? Or am I making that up in my head?
I know what you're talking about.
Do you know what I'm talking about?
For, um, suspension.
Bullying, it's bullying. Do we have a system in place to make sure that that's? It just reminded me when I saw the compliance thing when I was preparing for the board meeting. Do we have something in place that, like, triggers us every December and June or something, that we're updating that?
Yeah, so, we have on our, uh, website under the district tab is a safety, it's called student safety reporting in district bullying. And so the results from that are posted twice a year, December and June. And that's done with me sending out an email to the principals, and then getting the numbers from that. And then those numbers are posted. So we'll post them in December, which is half the school year roughly. And then there's a little notation that says the total number will be put in June, and then in June, we put the total number that's up there. So that's done twice a year.
So is that taken from, like, if a student went to the principal or whatever with a concern for, if they did the anonymous, like, is that all combined?
It's done through the, the bullying report system, so anything plugged in through there is what's counted and tracked.
Okay, okay, thank you, I just, just triggered in my head. Okay. My other question is with the extra time report. I know I asked you guys about this in the email, so this is not any additional money we're putting into. We have already approved all of that, this is just a tracking, like, a summary over a year's span or something of what we've paid out to overtime, or to the people we've paid out. Is that correct?
Right, so what happens is the board approves the negotiated agreement, and then the negotiated agreement gives rates. So that's the approval for them to be able to do these things. Then at the end of the period of auditors, anytime you get paid above and beyond your contract amount, they want to know what, they go, well, kind of like the camp report that we break, they want to report all of the camps things as we're going to take out. So it's just so that they have something to show there's a board approval for every dollar we get.
So I'm just curious, because when he brought the overtime with the custodian, that was really interesting to me, that we were putting that much in overtime. So I'm curious if there's some way that we could periodically get a report of how much we're putting into overtime in various areas as just a, a trigger to possibly look, is there a more efficient way we can be doing things, like what you've done with the custodians? You know, because I think maybe sometimes we're putting so much into overtime, wouldn't it be more efficient to hire somebody at a regular rate? I don't know, when I see that many people, it just makes me curious if, maybe if we solve those summarized, if we should look at it different?
But this doesn't mean, um, custodial overtime, because somebody called off them, like, these are field trips that, that doesn't, it's extra time, but we wouldn't hire another bus driver for field trips, it's just what they, they do, you know, after their rounds are done.
So we couldn't hire somebody for the extended time?
For ESY type?
But with additional and extended service time?
Yeah, those are, those are duties that our staff is doing outside of their normal job.
So you can't hire people to do these, these, it has to be our own staff?
Well, you must. They're in the negotiating group, so they have to be negotiated out for us to do the different work. So like, as an example, extended school year is-
Yeah.
Is like our staff teaching kids during summertime. So if we're not going to hire somebody else, we're going to use the people to do it.
Right, right. So these aren't additional, okay.
But we can do it with overtime, we can do a review of the overtime and the problem.
To that point, yeah, let's do that, so it doesn't relate to this list. But it was just really, it was interesting to me to see that much in overtime, I appreciate you bringing that. So, even if it doesn't relate to this list, I think it would be great to see if maybe we could save some dollars like that. And it's good to know that all those things are related to that.
Well, I see, I don't want to be presumptuous, but I'm assuming that sort of announcement is going on right now.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, even though we may not see it, I think our administrators are, I would hope, are, are doing that, are reviewing the rest things. Yeah, and are evaluating, again, whether we're, and I'm not saying it doesn't make sense for it to come in the report, but I, I would hope that that is what's taking place already, and that they're constantly evaluating, how can we operate most efficiently? And if that is to bring somebody on, we're sinking overtime, then we expect that to happen.
Chair, Chair and I are sideboring, and I mean, what you do is on the financial, it's something that's, um, the timeline item, into the financials, um, to just track it from a monetary perspective.
That would be helpful.
Yeah.
That would be helpful, thank you.
Okay. Another pervert discussion.
Um, Anderson?
Yes.
That, Palachi?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
And five point ten is our athletic reports.
Sure.
All right, um, Anderson?
Yes.
That, Palachi?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Director of Special Education.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm just seeking approval tonight for special services contract, and it is actually for somebody going out on a return to community, so it's a self-contract.
Second. Stewie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
That, Palachi?
Yes. Yes. Thank you.
Okay, Rob. Return, Rob.
Members of the board, just looking for your approval for the new doors at Clear Creek, and also the installation of the central space two doors. Second. Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
That, Palachi?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Now, it's been some future, future considerations.
First one, I'd like to thank, um, the, is it called the DAR group? DAR? That was amazing to hear some of the history and how you become part of that group. That was informative for me, and, um, I just appreciate our teachers reaching out and Gail reaching out to have a benefit our government class, but she was also in with the fifth grade classes. So I just, that's another neat community-school partnership, so that was a huge nation. And, um, it's been neat to get some, um, feedback with, when we put out there different needs and different ways that we're going to reach out to Trotwood, and to see different schools, um, and their fundraisers that they've done, and just the excitement. Um, my son, one of my boys is at, um, the sixth grade building, and he came home so pumped, and we made him earn the money that he got to give for all of the dump tank and the competitions against the teachers. And it was just really cool to see the excitement, it had clearly been built up within the building and why they were doing it. And it was just neat to see the administrative team get behind it, and the teachers get behind it, and build into the kids why they were doing this. So, um, kudos to everybody here that, um, really embraced it in the way they have, because it's made a difference for our kids, and that's why, that's one of the reasons we did this, is to under, help them understand the impact, um, that we can have on other people that are in need. Um, and another thing with that, I just appreciate we had, um, there are some feet-on-the-ground ways that we're going to be able to help them out with beautification. And I appreciate Kyle had reached out and said, hey, why don't we get an administrative team together, and we'd like to be helping with, you know, whatever it is. And I just think, you know what, that really says a lot, that it's not just we're saying, here's some money, here's some, but we're willing to get out there and do whatever it takes. And that shows that this is coming from the top-down of people that are willing to get in there and do whatever it takes. So, I just appreciate how everybody has just really come together and, um, done whatever is needed, um, to help out our sister communities. So, that's all that I have.
So, have you know of anybody who wants to be a bus driver?
Who would help us back?
If you want to be a bus driver, you would be proud. Would be, Rob?
Absolutely.
Our kids are awesome.
And, uh, thanks for coming, and, um, the only other thing I had, I stopped at the city-sponsored, the New York.
Birmingham.
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 So, in perform.
Did you see our daughters perform?
Thank you.
Our daughters are there tonight.
Well, I missed that, I had to come here.
I'll tell you, you said that.
They kept saying Dan Good's going to be here, but I, anyway, it was a nice, it's a nice thing they're doing. I showed Mrs. Bab the cake they had, it looks like-
Oh, that was a cake?
Yeah, a cake. But anyway, it was a nice function, it'll be a nice addition to the community, so the school board will represent.
Thanks, Charles.
You're welcome.
Thanks to the ladies for coming down here, and I, uh, hope that everything goes okay for you guys down the road here, getting things straightened out there. Thanks to the DAR, um, Mrs. Cavendish, right? Okay, yeah, I have it on years ago. It always happens, but anyway, thanks for her, um, her presentation. And, um, tomorrow night is our first home football game versus Beaver Creek, so we have nothing going on. And I'm, I'm going to kind of lead around our entrance and pretend it tomorrow night, so.
Well, it's a good start. Yeah, that's right. Keep it up. Sorry for being late, sorry that we weren't able to, kind of, at the beginning, but thank you for, for coming this evening, for the partnership. And, uh, just thank you to all the folks that donated, I'm sorry I missed it, I ran into Gail though, as I was coming in, and she told me it was the best part of the meeting, so. Of course. But, uh, you know, I'm just, uh, I'm sorry that I couldn't be here on time. Appreciate Mr. Good stepping up. You're welcome.
I can pay a guy, I want the best of him, so. No, and again, thanks for, uh, bringing seventy-five and coming down here, um, sitting through a board meeting that's not even yours. Good as you. Yeah, like Mrs. Bab said, I have, I have two good kids in the district as well, and they were super excited with all the things that were going on at their buildings, so, um, kudos to, you know, the, the building administration too. I mean, they were psyched, I mean, they were excited every day to do stuff and to donate, um, which, every day, that was, that was the ATM I was standing at. So we contributed, but they were really excited, and they also, they understood why. It wasn't just to do fun things, it was because they knew people needed help, and, um, I think that really meant something to them. So, um, we were certainly glad to help as a district, and, you know, um, we're just pleased that we were able to connect. Again, Chris Bab for connecting those dots, um, back when this happened. And as well as the administration for operationalizing it, so, um, thank you again. Thanks to the, um, daughters of the American Revolution, that's pretty neat. Again, I think another example of somebody asking for something, and even somebody in the community, you know, um, immediately stepped forward and, um, got things done. Um, and, you know, as a district, you can't say thank you enough, that's, that's how we get things done around here, so thank you very much. But I think that's it, so, move to, uh, item nine point one, executive session. To consider the compensation of a public employer official, conferences with the board's attorney to discuss matters which were the subject of pending, pending or imminent work action. I don't believe, not any actions afterwards. To quote Mr. Palachi, anything discussed in executive session needs to remain in executive session.
Second. Yes. Yes.